Good afternoon, everyone. This is a meeting of the City Council's Transportation Committee. Today is Monday, August fourteenth. Our first item of business today is consideration of the minutes from the July twenty-fourth meeting.
Will approval of the July twenty-fourth meeting minutes?
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, next up, we have three project resolutions for ALDOT. And Colin Alexander is going to be presenting.
Good afternoon. My name is Colin Alexander. I serve as Senior Planner for Birmingham Department of Transportation. We do have three standard project resolutions from ALDOT that you guys reviewed today. First project, which includes not only a resolution, but also a signal installation, maintenance, and operation agreement as well, is for a project to redesign the exit one thirty off of I twenty. The plan for this project is to close exit one thirty B and the ramp that goes off heading towards Eastlake at First Avenue North. Combine that with exit one thirty A. So you'll come off to First Avenue North off of a single exit. There'll be a new traffic light at First Avenue North, which is what the signal agreement is for us to continue to maintain and operate. And then the exit-only lane that is in the curve coming out of the split would be two-way traffic. So we don't want to get that exit-only lane to take the ramp.
Pretty familiar with this. ALDOT had proposed closing one thirty B and sought public input. And so I think this was a solution that folks said needed to happen if they were going to close one thirty B.
Correct. And the signal was actually one of our recommendations as well. Originally, ALDOT had another version that did not include the signal. We recommended the signal.
So the project resolution, what does that entail?
So this is just a standard project resolution. We actually passed three or four others earlier this year. It's part of ALDOT's process to secure federal funding. It's just to make sure that the local jurisdiction is on board. So that's what the resolution is for all three of these projects. And then the agreement, the signal agreement in particular, which needs to go down separately, it basically says that once ALDOT puts in the signal, we take over management of it.
Why don't you go through the others and we'll come back.
Sure. Absolutely. The second project on your list is an ALDOT project to replace non-ADIA compliant curb ramps on state routes in Jefferson and Shelby County. So because a lot of those routes cross through the city of Birmingham, they're asking us for a project resolution on that as well. Part of your packet includes a breakdown of these locations within the city of Birmingham that will receive ADIA compliant ramps. So that's the second project. The third project is an interstate resurfacing project on I fifty-nine between Aviation and Fourth Avenue. They're going to be using an OGSC layer. This is similar to what they paved on four fifty-nine, which is another project resolution we passed earlier this year. It's a type of asphalt surfacing that's a little more appropriate that helps to reduce hydroplating.
Aviation Avenue to Fourth Avenue South. So...
Right there, back through Eastlake, right after the split of twenty fifteen.
Trying to make, is that supposed to be Fourth Avenue South?
It is Fourth Avenue South at that point. We have the interstate.
All of the airports on the north side.
It is the... Then leave the exit is Fourth Avenue South because there is a curve. That is correct. So the interstate crosses over First Avenue North, just right next to Eastlake. And so First Avenue North is now on the north side of the interstate before you get to Fourth Avenue South.
Okay. I think it's north.
It's Fourth Avenue South in the Burlock area. So where it's, the name is switched over to Parkway East, Fourth Avenue South intersection, Parkway East.
But Aviation...
Aviation is north, but if you look at the... So, starting at Aviation, it's on the north side of First Avenue North. And then if you follow the interstate, it crosses over First Avenue North. And so now it's Fourth Avenue South back towards past Burlock Golf Course.
Wow. So that's actually a really significant stretch.
Yes.
Of fifty-nine. Is there... Are they doing this in response to like traffic accidents that are...
I couldn't tell you that. I just know that they've been doing this in a couple of other interstates in the area.
Okay. All right. Just curious. Okay, so you need... So the BDOT's recommendation is approval, right? And you need a vote on the resolutions and a separate vote on the signal installation for one thirty A?
That's correct.
Any additional questions?
Just one on the second two resolutions. Are there any new responsibilities that the city's taken on that we don't already have responsibility for?
No, on these resolutions, there's nothing that we take responsibility for. It's reaffirming that we will maintain any access points onto federal highways or interstates in accordance with NHWA standards.
All right. Move approval of the resolution for replacement of non-compliant curb ramps on state routes and replacement of open-grade friction course safety layer on I fifty-nine from Aviation to Fourth Avenue South.
Okay. Second, and then I got a question. Is there, do they have a list of the non-compliant curb ramps?
Yes, that list was provided to the committee and for the locations that the city has brought in. We went ahead and broke those out since the project is across the Jefferson and Shelby County.
Okay. Yeah, it somehow or another didn't make it into the packet. Okay. All right, so have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes. And then we need to do...
Move approval of the resolution to redesign or resolution support to redesign I twenty eastbound at exit one thirty. Stripe alterations from closure ramp extension and signal installation.
All right. Second, any additional discussion of that? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. Okay. All right. Next up, we have, actually want to talk about both of these at the same time. The Birmingham Regional Paratransit Consortium ClassTran agreement and the Public Transportation Services Agreement with Birmingham Jefferson County Transit Authority, BJCTA, and the city of Birmingham. Chief Mitchell?
Yes, sir. Actually, we'll go back to you, but in response to the BJCTA, I think that would be much more aggressive conversation. So if you had any questions about this action, we can go ahead.
Yeah, so... I did have some issues that... So basically, the reason why I wanted to talk about both of them kind of together is... I feel like the current agreements, as they're structured currently, really don't provide enough information in terms of the city's expectations. So, you know, the contracts are basically saying, we want public transportation and here's what we'll pay for it. And there's, outside of the reporting requirements, which is a section that we added, I think in...
Two years ago.
Twenty eighteen.
Okay.
Yeah. But in any case, it may have been before then. I think maybe we tweaked it again in twenty eighteen. But in any case... I know the, so the city is the BJCTA's biggest customer, probably the same with ClassTran. And, you know, looking at the big picture, our public transportation system for the region is less than ideal. A lot of that is not our fault. Because, I mean, it's kind of structured the way it is out of necessity in part. But anyway, it's a fragmented system. And I know a lot of folks would like to see, you know, us make some progress towards having a vision for the future that is a better design system, you know? And part of how we get there is giving some energy and thought towards a strategic plan for the future. You know, if we want something better, then how do we, you know, what is that something better and how do we get there? And so I think we need to articulate that desire in...
Contracted.
In the contract. And, you know, I don't know, I don't think we can make it a requirement, you know, but...
So that's, I guess that's the perfect segue. So Colin, in the conversation we had with Director Fowler, developed some language that essentially could into even part of both agreements actually. And I lean on Mr. Attorney Stanley to make sure that those are legal requirements and legal means that we can fit into the agreement. I think he asked me at that conversation with you and some council members that noted that, you know, we just don't want to be a blank check to the system. But we want to have a more viable system with more metrics and more accountability when it comes to the certain level of service that we're paying for as a customer.
Yeah, yeah. So that's sort of, you know, the one piece outside of the reporting requirements that I'm hoping we can incorporate is, I know we have folks here in City Hall that think a lot about public transportation and want to make our city a more multimodal city and, you know, aspire for public transportation to work better in the city of Birmingham. So, you know, if that's really what we want, then I think we need to articulate those desires in the agreement. And I think it applies both to ClassTran and to BJCTA. They're, you know, I consider them as, you know, one's a lot bigger than the other, but they're essentially doing the same thing. So that's one piece. The other thing that I think also needs to be amended in the agreements, you know, for ClassTran, I don't know that we have a reporting requirement in their agreement.
They have monthly reporting.
Right.
They have a monthly reporting. I don't know if this included in that report.
Well, for BJCTA, we have a monthly, but for ClassTran...
I think we still use the same criteria that we had with ClassTran for a long time. We try to pick up a funding that will walk on account.
Yeah. So, again, they're both doing the same thing, you know, one's urban, the other's rural. But I think we hold them to the same standard. So the, so that needs to be added to our... I feel that it would be beneficial for us to add some reporting requirements to the ClassTran agreement. Yes, ma'am.
And there is a reporting, an annual...
Yeah, it's a report to ridership report each month. Fifteenth of March, accounted by boarding each individual rider. But, you know, including that limits the number of buses vehicles operating in state. Home time performance, goals and efforts to increase ridership, monthly ridership route, average weekday boardings, average Saturday and Sunday boardings, how boardings are originated, phone, computer, et cetera. Nature of ride disability, general drop-off location, hospital, shopping center, school, university, restaurant. Some, some complaints.
So does it say who this report's supposed to be submitted to?
City.
City, okay. So, again, you know...
But even for you to find this chair, and I think you started doing this more often, that not just the administration reports, but just the chair.
Right.
I think it would be wise to at least have both the administration and the transportation chairman on chair one, whoever.
Right.
And to see if the same, you know, authorities that we have on the give report. I don't want to be siloed with just the mayor's office when it comes to stuff like that.
Right.
Because you have those people defining, we just sit here and try to administer. So I'm in total agreeance that there's some type of language like that needs to be in that agreement.
Yeah. And, you know...
Because you get the call, just as much as we get the call.
Right. So, yeah, I think that's good. You know, I know that ClassTran's capacity in terms of, you know, administration and stuff is different than BJCTA. So I don't know if the monthly interval would be too much, you know, but...
Yeah, it would definitely be absolutely.
Well, we, in the past, we've done that annually. But we have this wonderful new software, which is the same software that BJCTA uses called Ego Lane. That we both paid an arm and a leg for. And there's amazing reporting available through that software.
Okay. So, yeah, if it's not a big issue, you know...
So we send it to you every night?
Yeah, I mean, we'll put it in the agreement going forward, but yes, the conversation resides within the mayor's office, the chairman, or the chair one.
Okay, can you put then the contract of who we should send that to? Because it's available near...
Right, yeah.
The municipality report available through that software will tell you each city within the county, it'll say how many rides were for medical appointments, how many rides were to... It'll say nutrition, which is to senior centers. I mean, it's got about ten different categories, so you could see which communities are using the service. And of course, we were far smaller than BJCTA, but we pick up and drop off in areas that they won't, they don't go to. So I think we fulfill a need within the community to service those people that desperately need transportation. Medical appointments, for jobs, for nutrition, to the senior centers, their noon day meal.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we charge our riders a small fee, but it's curb to curb. It's for elderly, disabled, and rural people. So these are people that have no other means of transportation. And, you know, our community needs it.
Sure, absolutely. And this is not, you know, my questions aren't about, you know, whether or not we should do this at all. It's absolutely we should do this, but from, you know, our side of the agreement, again, you know, the contracts for a long time have been, the city says essentially in the agreement, we want public transportation and here's how much we'll give you for it. And there's not much meat at all, you know, other than that simple, you know, concept. So all I'm saying is, is that we have folks in-house that think a lot about how much better our public transportation system could be. So all I'm challenging our folks to do is to put that on paper, to say, you know, we want better and we want, you know, these organizations, ClassTran and BJCTA, to, you know, push the boundaries. Help us get to this vision of a better system that we want. And I feel very strongly that we got to do this on paper because obviously, you know, not putting it on paper hasn't helped us, you know, really move the needle a whole lot. So...
So, yes, Mr. Chairman, I actually agree with what you're saying. And it's not to say you guys, like, translate it, but it's just that the case that me and him has had about accountability and hoping not just our transportation partners or our social service partners. Seeing what happens with the money that we provide to the services of...
The city of Birmingham receives about forty-five or forty-eight percent of all of the rides that we do on a daily basis. And that's been true for many years. I've been there fourteen, and it's been true for a long time. And the difficulty that ClassTran has had to deal with these past few years is that the regional planning commission has cut our two to three ten program by two thirds, where they used to be allocated three million dollars for this community. We're now allocated one million dollars. When it's gone, it's gone. So if we run out of money, where's that going to come from? And we've always, you know, we do a campaign every summer as we go into the fall to raise funds within the communities so that they contribute too and have a little spin in the game too. And we do raise about a million dollars between, and of course, Jefferson County and the city of Birmingham is the majority of that. The city of Birmingham contributes about twenty-five percent of what we raise, but they get forty-five percent of the service. So I've been being that drum for years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
And that's, it's even more vital now because our federal funding has been cut so drastically. Pre-pandemic, we were doing six hundred and fifty, seven hundred rides a day. Now we're down to three hundred. And I think some people just stopped going to senior centers. They stopped going to, you know, places that they didn't find necessary. But, you know, most, I get little notes in the mail with their, you know, with their checks, with their rides, all the time thanking us for what we do. Needed.
Okay. And you guys operate...
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday. So that's something that I notice. I think the agreement currently has the service operating every day except on holidays. So that needs to be corrected.
Well, we do operate on holidays for dialysis patients only. And then it's only, I think it's Thanksgiving Day and Christmas Day, but we don't operate all. But, you know, it's Monday, and people have to go to dialysis. I mean, that's like a day, we do Monday.
But you aren't doing dialysis patients on the weekend?
No.
Yeah, okay.
People around dialysis go Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Right.
Or Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. So their Saturdays are usually covered by family members.
Yeah. Okay.
We're not opposed to working on weekends, but, you know, we can't...
Yeah. Also, it was brought to my attention that Shelby County has a little different kind of agreement with ClassTran that's actually based off the number of trips. So I think, you know, maybe we should give that a look.
We could provide that historical information as well.
Okay.
Cool, then change the price of insurance.
We're trying to get them to raise the per ride so that the rider contributes just a little bit more. It's right now four dollars each way, which you know is a bargain if you've been on Uber or something.
Yeah.
But the board of directors is not in favor of raising the money. People need us and, you know, so many of them are from communities that can't afford it.
I got a couple more comments, but Colin, you have anything?
No, just to your point, I think you were just talking about working together, pushing forward, raising vision. But I guess it's how you composite it, and so putting it in the agreement, you put that in as, in the context of participating in a yearly transportation walk-in or whatever, coming in and sitting down and basically discussing issues of how each group can move that forward. I guess to put a little bit of an action item to it, so to speak.
Yeah, yeah. So let me give you an example. When I first... When I first got to City Hall, I, um, sent over a request to BJCTA. Um, this was two directors previous to the one we have now. And I, I asked for their, I asked, no, first I asked, do you guys have a strategic plan? And then, you know, the next question is, okay, can I see it? And what I received was a eight-page glossy brochure for the BRT. That is not a strategic plan. Um, a strategic plan, you know, tells everybody what's your vision for five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, and how you're gonna get there. Um, and it's not a trivial, um, investment, you know? It's, it's a significant project to do those, but again, I think it's something that, you know, needs to happen, um, so.
So, to your point about, were you, did you plan for, because I was gonna drive like over there with number one.
Oh.
This one?
What kind of?
Uh, yeah.
Because instead of just being, just saying strategic plan, I mean, we have to keep, careful what our words is going to be what we want, so we have to take words like wrong range.
Right. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm being kind of vague because I don't know exactly how to articulate this, you know? That's for Jim to figure out.
I think we're trying to bounce our ideas so we can see what you would say.
Yeah, um.
Does that matter, is it long-term, strategic, long-range?
I'm trying to help, uh, I mean, this committee has examples of what might be a strategic plan. And my first suggestion is to include, but not be limited to, and that's assuming they're gonna make those changes. But there are other things that probably should be in it, I don't know if I can articulate what those would be.
Yeah.
Might be something to ask the transit authority.
Right, yeah, and, and obviously, it's, it's an agreement between two entities, so, you know, they have to be cool with whatever language we put in there, right? In theory.
In theory, yes.
Yes.
I know that we're the number one under.
Right.
At this point, we should be able to.
Yeah. So beyond, beyond, you know, that, um, with regard to the reporting, I would like to see some increased level of detail in the reports that they're providing. Two things specifically. They are not reporting their cancellations of trips currently, and you know, I feel like most of those are generally fall into the category of other details about those cancellations, why they're occurring, when they're occurring. And the other, uh, big thing that I would like to see added to the information that they're reporting is other details that tell us about rider behavior. So, um, they're, they're giving us sort of really big picture numbers right now that.
Behavior of the demographic, so just move right.
No, it's, it's more about how they're riding, like, um, what they're giving us right now is monthly numbers for a route.
Right.
And that doesn't tell us, you know, it isn't granular at all. It doesn't tell us that, you know, things like on this route, most of the riders are morning commute, morning and evening commute, you know, or, um, they don't tell us, you know, anything about, you know, uh, where, you know, the highest density of riders are and, and those sorts of things, so, um, again, I, I don't know just right off the top of my head, you know, exactly how to articulate that, but the, the report that they're providing to us currently is good information, but it doesn't really tell us a lot about what riders are doing.
So I'm kind of, kind of just asked, since I kind of have the same reporting system, does it, does it drill down in reference to what the chairman has asked me for?
Well, I'm not sure, I mean, I, I know, for instance, if you picked out city of Hoover, and it would tell you like in a month of time, or daily if necessary, but monthly usually is what we do in the municipality report. Or it would say we had, you know, X amount of rides, and so many of them went for dialysis, so many of them went to a senior center, these went to shopping, these went for medical appointments, and there's about eight or ten categories for that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, cancellations I do know are usually because the person got sick, found another ride, or something like that. We rarely don't take them on our end.
Right.
It happens, you know, if you've got, um, a driver that got sick or had a family emergency and all of a sudden can't take that route. But, um, uh, recently, we had, um, something happen and the driver had to go home. And the, it, the route she was on, where she was supposed to pick up her seniors at a senior center, at about one, one-thirty, that's when they usually drive home. And that one o'clock is our busiest time of the day. And, um, the, the center manager put those people in her car and home for us, you know, which was really nice.
Yeah.
That rarely happens.
Right.
Rarely, I mean, if I was the center manager, I don't want that responsibility or that liability, um, but they, you know, these people are the hard ones.
No, my, my comments about the cancellations really come from, more from the BJCTA side, you know, because pretty much every day, they have multiple cancellations, um, and that's, you know.
You're normally talking about their period transit, right?
No, 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 this is.
This is more.
Yeah.
I think we only do period.
Right, right, yeah.
Everything.
And, and I know, you know, I'm kind of lumping both organizations together, but, but, but just only because, you know, you guys both do public transportation, so, um, you know, to be honest, we've kind of held BJCTA to a higher standard, I mean, if you compare the, the two contracts, they're, they're not the same, um, so, but if I'm gonna hold BJCTA to a standard, I think, you know, class, we should treat Class Tram the same way, you know, with some minor exceptions maybe, but, um, so, in any case, um, so what I'm suggesting, what I, I would move to do is to delay these agreements for two weeks.
I would, I would, yeah, I think that would be wise for the DIT team, and I can be involved also with Michelle, having to track it, to the leadership of the BJCTA, and give them the thoughts that we had today to see what can be hired out or included into the basic report.
Mm-hmm.
And including the Class Tram, I don't think theirs will be as well placed as the BJCTA, but I think, I think we can see the compromise of both of them.
Yeah, okay. Sound reasonable?
Our executive director, um, who unfortunately couldn't be here, she had another meeting and sent me. But, uh, she, um, she's been in several meetings with Charlotte Shaw, the director of BJCTA. And, you know, we, we do cross paths all the time, so, um, we, you know, we both are on the same page in terms of improving transportation for the city of Birmingham and Jefferson County, and the other, all the other place we work is Shelby County.
Mm-hmm.
So we do a lot of, uh, things that help people in the community, like if, um, because even Alga recognizes that Jefferson and Shelby are kind of joint communities. They allow us to take people from Shelby County and bring them up here to the medical center.
Mm-hmm.
Or things of, you know, necessary trips like that. Um, and we don't have to, you know, the vet pay. Other, uh, transit companies in, um, outline counties just do their counting, and you're, you're confined to that. So we, um, we're fortunate that we are recognized, that we have the two communities that recognizes their joy. But we, we have worked with BJCTA in the past, and, you know, continue to meet with them. Our executive director, that's, that's.
Yeah, yeah, um, so.
So maybe in a discussion, we could include you or someone from the city, and to have kind of a roundtable with everybody that's concerned about transportation, and all get on the same page and see how we can improve it for our community.
Yeah, and, you know, no offense intended, but the only reason that Class Tram exists is because way back when BJCTA said, we're not going to do rural transportation. So we ended up with two organizations that do, you know, essentially the same thing. Um, and, but because the federal funds don't cover administration on the rural side, BJCTA, a long time ago, said, we're not gonna do that, so Class Tram had to be invented, um.
Well, it was also invented because, um, there were a lot of social service, uh, agencies, and they each all had their, their own buses. So you had, it used to be called UCP, it's not relineability, and part, and a number of, of, uh, even senior centers had their own buses, but it wasn't coordinated at all, and they came together in nineteen ninety-six, I think it was, um, to coordinate that, and that's how that strand actually was formed.
Um, so in any case, you know, I think there's some improvements that can made, be made to the agreements, um. You okay?
Yeah, because I wanted to make sure I got, you said something about maybe like a town hall or some type of.
No, 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 I was talking more so the transportation, uh, engines involved in that, like, we're talking about how we're gonna actually move it forward, tie it into an actual action item, so whether that's for reviewing the strategic plan, whether that's kind of having some input in the strategic plan. But if all those entities kind of intentionally come together, or just once a year, whatever, to discuss where we want to go in the future, and how we can get there.
I, I think that's reasonable, I mean, you know, we could, I think BJCTA specifically, I know that they're doing those types of annual in, in-person interactions, um, so I don't think that's, you know.
Yeah, I know at Dave County, I went down there and they had a pretty robust, like ten-year plan on their model of transportation.
You said they?
They, they.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, I mean, they, they had pretty much ten years mapped out.
Right.
Very, very low level of product dedicated state plan.
That's right.
Yeah, but I mean, they had like trains and people moving and a lot of this.
Yeah.
Beyond just the. Well, it's.
So, okay, so I made a motion for two-week delay on both of these.
Sorry, I mean.
All right, on paper, say aye. All right, all right, so two-week delay. All right, and then, um, for our old business, Julie Bernard's here, we, we have, uh, a couple of ordinances that are scheduled for a public hearing on the twenty-ninth, and Julie's been working on that, and she has a couple of updates for us.
Good afternoon. Um, yeah, I had a soft offer to come to give an update, um, has the, I haven't checked the website, but OPI has the ordinances ready to notice, um, we may, you know, update and do a corrective version, I just discovered that in editing out some of the footer, that, uh, more than half the page numbers in the towing ordinance has disappeared. So I will get that fixed, um, and, um, yeah, I just thought, I offered there was any update, we've made a few adjustments, we've had some contact from some, um, people in the industry, parking lot owners and such, and, you know, expressed great concern about some of the things that were in the ordinance, or requested clarification, we've made a few adjustments to try to help with some of that, um, but, uh, just still, you know, looking to know comments on what comes about, the council has it, did their hands?
And it's been advertised at this point?
Uh, I will check, that was in the vote, it should have been.
Once, once, once the council voted on it, like, I think it was like, you know, automatically they start the noticing advertising process on all of the.
Okay.
So probably in a paper, I think.
Yeah, well, uh,
Is it?
It would either be in the Times of Alabama Messenger, which would be either Alabama Messenger, the Wednesday Saturday, and Times would be Thursday, so I checked the clerk's office and see. I will, um, a tribal dress council was concerned about the, um, the reports, uh, to the council and getting some information, I talked to Mr. McDaniel's and put in that it would go to, in those reports, it would go to council administrator, so then they can distribute those. And the section, we took out the section that had been, you know, previously there, and just kind of moved that provision that there would be to the provision, it's in section forty-three now. They require the towing companies to report, the towing companies to report to the chief of police, and we added in something to get at least a summary of complaints that, you know, of course, that had come in, over that period. So I wanted to point that out specifically, so we'll go and see. So.
Okay. So, um, yeah, I'm expecting some robust conversation at the public hearing, I'm sure. People have been asking for this for a long time, so. Um, and I think we put the parking lot folks on notice, so.
As I said, we've gotten, I have gotten emails from a few people, and I was gonna forward those to the council, but what I suggested, uh, those people who have contacted us directly, I sent out a copy of the drafts to them on Friday evening, and I suggested that, because some of their comments, they change based on a few changes that have been made, so I suggested that they send those comments back to me and to, uh, Ms. Largo and Attorney Rutledge in our office, because we've all been working on it, so we can all see what's there, but also ask that they copy the chair, you know, copy, uh, councilor Quinn as the chair, and copy the, um, council administrator, deputy administrator, so.
Okay. Sounds good.
And I will show them the administrations.
All right. Thank you. Um, one other thing that I need to bring to you guys' attention, uh, so we have a school traffic issue. Today, we received a call from president of Barrett Elementary School PTO, reporting that there are issues with the designated one-way street in front of the school during drop-off and pickup. Drivers are driving in both directions. That is a two-way street. Um, it's not a one-way. There, Ms. Coleman, Ramisha Coleman, that, that is the Barrett Elementary PTO president. There, Ms. Coleman, Ramisha Coleman, that, that is the Barrett Elementary PTO president. She's requesting an evaluation of signage. Um, so I, I don't know where she got the idea that that's Second Avenue South in that block.
So there are, I, I'll, I'll have our team follow up and figure this out. Um, you could pass up on, there are a couple of instances, I don't think it's every school, but there are some instances where we have temporary release. They're gonna drop off and pick up, so that may be what she's referring to.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I'll just have to get with our, um, our school sign team to make sure that is one of the ones we designated that way. And if it is, we'll go back and try to consider it.
Okay. So it's good. All right. That's all we got. All right, much to your turn.
All right, Chance is going to Montgomery to get some more transportation money. Other than that, I'll move to German.
All right, second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Need you, Dern.